Good evening. It's now six forty-five Horizon time, not my time. And well, I will call the Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order, and it's September eleventh. And in honor of September eleventh, when we rise to say the pledge of allegiance, we'll have a moment of silence in honor of the folks that we lost on nine eleven. So we'll rise. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if we can have a roll call between Secretary Slager.
Yes. Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager.
Here.
Vice President Shoffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we have established a forum for tonight's meeting. Moving on, the adoption of our agenda, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, the agenda is adopted. That brings us to gratitudes, and I would open up the tables to who would like to share gratitude.
I am grateful for our fine arts program, which is something that gets echoed every year by me. But my daughter recently got, she's at Michigan State now, and she got a part in a play there, partly because when she was a junior at Cedar Springs, they had her use a British accent. So she spent a lot of time getting that British accent up to par. And that helped her get the role at Michigan State, so.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
And my son just got put in the fall play this year, so.
Okay, so very nice. Who else?
I'm thankful for the fact that our parents and teachers have all adjusted to the school schedule. And even though campus is under construction, seems to be going by as smoothly as expected and going well, so. Thank them for that.
And the days are a little cooler, which helps everybody, even with the air.
And just thankful for the cooperation that we're getting with parents and our transportation group. They're experiencing some real significant influences on their operation due to lack of staffing. And Jerry Gavin said today that never in his twenty-one years has he seen it this bad, as far as just not having enough drivers. So we're gonna be making some route adjustments for next week and continuing to be as efficient as we can and hope that we get some new applicants to be drivers.
For me, I appreciate Tom Antor and having the freedom to be also here and recognizing our former student, I believe it's Timothy Brown, that was killed in action. And I just appreciate also during the school day and being in our auditorium. And I just, it was a very proud moment, and it's nice to see the patriotism in Cedar Springs. So, thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Do we have any high school representatives?
We have some young people in the audience, but I do not think any of them are in high school. We were planning to get a rep today.
Okay. We will catch them sooner than later. All right, moving on to kids' items. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, motion carries. Beginning with the discussion items, bringing in three twenty-four parent advisors for special education, also known as PACE, representative recommendations.
So I'm gonna take this one. And so, attached in board book is an outline provided to us from Stacy Boskow. So it just talks a little bit about what PACE is and how it impacts the specialty programming throughout the county. So PACE is a parent advocacy group. It's a countywide group. Every year, districts from around the county nominate or provide three parent individuals who are parents with students with IEPs. And so it's the role of the district to recommend and for the board to hopefully approve the names that are brought before you. So this evening, we're asking, or we're nominating, three individuals, Becky, April, Christina Cassie, and Jen Craig, to be the PACE representatives for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Which we know when you have two, so we have three, so that's great.
So we should have, three is the ideal number, but typically we've been historically able to find too many individuals. So it's exciting that we have a third voice left behind.
Thank you. Any questions? Straight forward. Okay. All right, we'll move on then to the financial update with Marty Sullivan.
Get this poll. Couple things I just wanna highlight real quick to the board. Last week, the auditors were out doing their final field work. They have, I would say, probably completed seventy-five percent, or probably about ninety percent of their audit testing. And they will be wrapping up the audits this month. I anticipate having an audit presentation ready for October, November for the meeting. As of Friday, before they left, they noted that they currently do not have any findings to note. Everything is going smoothly. They will have a management comment related to the food service excess fund balance. That's something that they are obligated to note, that we, once again, do have excess fund balance in our food service program, so we will be submitting another spend down plan for that. But it's significantly less than what it has been in the past. Should I, does everybody remember the?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the one thing that they noted, that they would be including in their management comment letter to the boards. We have that excess fund balance. Looking at the general fund for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, as of now, we are looking quite a bit better than what I had presented on the final budget. I knew we would be coming in better than the approximately eight hundred thousand, but we are coming in even a little bit better than what I was anticipating. Some changes that led to that would be, when I did my final review of the regional special ed billings for the Region One, we ended up billing back more than I originally budgeted for. So that increased revenue some. And then we have some expenditures that came in less than anticipated. Some of those final, conversely, some of the, like Rockford, did not end up billing us for. Their records were awful, conflicted what our record showed. They did not submit a Region One special ed invoice to us. So there's always a handful of those kind of curveballs as we close the year end. Taking a look at the bond budget, something to note, we are now in the process of closing out the Series One bond. We have fully expended those funds and will be using the Series Two funds going forward. So we will wrap up the Series One, and this part of the bond will eventually drop off of this report, and we will focus on the Series Two projects. And then, we did, I included a first glance at our two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four state aid membership. On Thursday, September seventh, we had three thousand one hundred and seventeen students attending class. That was our attendance for that morning. If we factor that into our upcoming state aid membership, we are currently looking at approximately twenty more FTEs than what I budgeted for. But the asterisk there is the state implemented a new declining enrollment funds for districts such as ourselves that are going through declining enrollment, and it's a new formula for calculating that state aid membership. If we were sticking to the old formula, which is the ninety-ten split, we would be down approximately twenty-one FTEs from what I budgeted. So, good news for this year, it's a one-time funding stream. We're gonna have to keep a very close eye on that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Because at that point, it might really hit us. And then again, I made mention of the new procurement workflow that has been implemented. It's been discussed with all of our building administrators, secretaries, and then we sent out a staff-wide email, making sure everyone was aware of the new workflow and who to ask questions to and what spending authority levels each individual group has. Any questions at this time? Oh, and I should also wanted to mention, Heidi had asked that the auditors take a look at the proposed procurement policy wording. They responded, they saw no issues with it. I included that email string on the finance update as well.
Thank you. That is not on for action tonight because it's still under consideration. Any questions for Marty?
Can I add one last thing?
You can.
Of the, our forty-seven point three million dollars of revenue, two point one million of that is COVID grant funded related. So as you know, those funds will be going away June thirtieth of this year. So if we did not have those funds this year, we would have been in a deficit situation. So it's a pretty significant part of our revenue currently, so. Just wanna keep that in front of everyone, and so we're all aware of what we're, what we have to navigate going forward.
Well stated. Okay.
Thank you.
It's pretty clear.
I've got the next one, too.
Oh, yes, okay. ABMR and Ebbly professional development expenditures.
So I think it was maybe one or two more meetings ago, we brought to you the Ebbly request for the Ebbly training. As we discussed, the per-unit cost of this training is three thousand dollars, but when we start sending multiple staff, it quickly adds up. And at that point, I believe we asked for seventy-two thousand dollars for those trainings. We do have some additional trainings we wanted to present to you for approval. This relates to additional staff members signing up for the Ebbly training, as well as our ABMR trainings. My understanding, these are professional developments that Jen would have presented to the board about a year ago. And we've been going through the process, and now we're really ready to kind of move forward with these professional developments. But as such, it's a pretty big dollar amount that we'll be expending to get our staff up to speed on these new instructional tools.
Resources.
Resources. The funding for it will be Title II and thirty-one A. So those are both restricted funding sources that we have to use for specific purposes. Title II is specific to staff development, professional development for our staff. Thirty-one A is for our at-risk students, but we can use those funds to train our staff that do work with our at-risk students. So this professional development is a allowable expenditure for our thirty-one A funds that we receive from the state. We currently have a allocation for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, just over seventy thousand dollars for Title II. And we actually have about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of deferred revenue from last year related to thirty-one A. So as I said, thirty-one A is restricted, so sometimes you have, if you don't have enough purposes to use it for, you can defer it into the next year. So this is a good, would be a good use of those carryover funds from last year.
This is on for action this evening. I shared in that email that I sent when I shared the board agenda last week for your review. This is not normal. Normally, we don't have these large numbers of staff going to these workshops and trainings, but because we did adopt the new CKLA curriculum for our teachers and students K eight in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and also with the new math curriculum, the ABMR training is a really advanced method for providing math interventions. Got some deep roots in supporting students with disabilities or with IEPs. But what's being realized is those same strategies that help our students with our IEPs also help students who struggling mathematics. And so it's really becoming a wraparound resource for teachers, both gen ed and specialty. So we're really excited about how that will help move forward, or move our students forward in mathematics, particularly at elementary grades.
Can we get about, can we get about what, no one's turned out, if the teachers can get sketches for that?
Oh, yeah.
Please.
Because, oh, sorry.
Okay.
Because you would be using that deferred funds, that's not gonna affect our bottom line, or what would affect our bottom line?
As we spend the funds, we would recognize the revenue, so the net, so your expenses will go up. Let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars, our expenses go up a hundred thousand dollars, and our revenues go up a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So it's necessary to change, but.
Like a wash?
Yeah, yeah.
And so this training is for math and for literacy.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm reading the thing before anybody watching on earlier, that's what the training is.
A little bit of alchemy there, yes.
And again, the per cost per staff member is not, would not exceed any core approval threshold, but when you start sending, you know, twenty, thirty staff members, it adds up quickly. And that's why we wanted to present it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is interesting, too. A lot of the ABMR sessions are done after school. So, you know, I'm walking out at six-thirty, and there are teachers who are coming out as well. So after teaching the full day, they attend a workshop after school. So while we're sending a lot of individuals to workshops and trainings, we're really trying to be mindful of, you know, keep honoring that instructional time during the school day as much as we can. So a lot of this is above and beyond the normal of the conventional day, so we appreciate that.
So that's good, so that also cuts down on cost also, because we would have to get substitutes for those classrooms, so you're being very mindful of that.
Teachers are amazing humans. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I think our high school students who are here can hold a presentation.
Well, we can.
They're here, so.
We can fit that right in. We have our high school representatives. If you would like to come to the podium. Nobody directed that. And introduce yourselves and share with us what's one on a high school.
Hi, I'm Natalie Gavir. I'm the president on self-help council.
I'm the founder and I'm the vice president. So we have the landscaping. I don't know how far back you guys are updated, but we had the landscaping here in the summer with our student voice forum. We didn't have, we, the words put up on stairwell, motivational words on the stairwell. We have received a sponsor for the rental closet, Dexco, a construction company, is working with us. I think it's very donating, seven, I think it's seven hundred and forty per month. Our secretary, our sister also, is the main person who runs that portion of the closet. We are working on homecoming decorations, so getting all that planned out, ordering everything, and then figuring out something to include the student body more. I miss, I have this amazing dividend fact, so a couple of people have brought up to me that we not, that Cedar Springs owner who does the homecoming parade, that we haven't done in a few years, and feel like a lot of that, so. I don't know what I did, but.
Yeah, it was, I, anybody else remember? It's just me. So each class decorated a float and had it in the red flag parade.
It was actually your husband.
I.
Oh, one thing I did miss is we did change from swirl to snow coming. Not going, we are trying to make sure that we do not have it as a blanket of homecoming, but also to include more of our winter sports in general, and increase our student participation. Not participation. I'm trying to look for a better word. What's another word for showing up?
School spirit.
Engagement.
We're trying to change that this year to increase the amount of tickets bought for snowball and also to increase the participation within school functions. So, and for participation and spirit, so. That's all I can do.
Any questions?
So the parade, because I had the, when Milo was a junior, the float was at my house with the big carpet and all that stuff. So is that what your girls are asking, is that you're thinking about bringing that back this year?
If it's possible this year or next year.
If it's away from our final day, you might be better off, because it all got, all jumbled together. And I think that's why they quit it, actually. So if homecoming is a little bit different, but they have it, they have it at the football game versus just the red flag parade. Bold year looks, may have pictures, too.
The only thing that I know, for red flag, you have to submit a form and make sure you're signing up to participate in the parade. I think that due date's coming up quick, or has passed, I don't know, but that's something you might want to look into.
Yeah, I, I think that if, that is going to be in the future, it's going to be next year, as homecoming is coming up really quick, and tickets are already being sold. And so it'd be a lot to figure out the parade this year.
Anyone who'd have time, so they look. Good ideas.
Any other questions?
I appreciate you looking into the traditions, like keeping things traditional, and so that's nice and fun, so.
Yeah. I have no question on that. I don't know if it's even that you guys can do, but I, we have noticed that some students choose not to use the closet because it's, it's in, like the room, the room that's in. I think because it's a male monitoring, so it might be uncomfortable. And we can't really, there's not really no way we can put it in instead of in a closet where we can have just a real medical care. So that's something we are working on. We have met a lot of people, so they just still be uncomfortable. And in general, there's always going to be some people who do find it uncomfortable, but that's nothing that we can prevent. However, we can try and prevent it to the least possible now. So we are looking for to eventually find it in its own room with a teacher who's able to monitor it and preferably a female, but there's only so much that can, that we can do, so. And we want it, since it is still kind of new, we just want to make sure that up and running and everyone can be able to access it if they need to, and then run on the keys as we go.
Very well thought out, with all the different angles. That's very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. All right, so moving back to discussion, we're gonna stick with the high school. We have the whole class novels for the high school, and we don't really have anything to discuss this meeting. They are out for public review. We're still in that thirty-day window?
Yes, there are two days remaining, thirty-day window. So they first went on display August fourteenth, and so we're twenty-eight days in. Tracy did have a question in regard to why the, why the materials have to be on display. Because there's a whole class novel, it's just like a textbook. It's just like a biology book for civics book, or math book, that we would have on display for parents to review for that thirty-day window in the curriculum office. So that's why this, this series of texts are different than some of the other books that we purchase.
If they use the same books next year, would they have to go through that process again, or is it, because with textbooks, they just do it once?
Yeah, once they're approved, they're.
Okay.
The existing textbook is, that was like four hundred and something.
Yes.
Can we get that?
Isn't it?
Or is it somewhere? I think we had asked for it last.
Isn't that, is that not the third artifact? The CSPS High School Adult Education Approved Reading Materials.
I think so, fourteen pages?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. But we're not approving that, we're just approving the ones we talked about.
Correct. These are already, those were already approved.
Okay. Okay.
And these are only with the adult education building, or these here at the high school, middle school?
If, I think the original list was, the list is so old that it initially covered high school and adult ed. We don't really have adult ed program anymore. So we didn't, we didn't change the list.
Gotcha. That's what had me confused, I was like, when?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in the historical record, when the Board of Education approved the book, it was approved as a high school or adult ed text.
No questions? Hopefully see that fraction next week, depending on any comments or things. All right, moving on to discussion item E, the spring and summer twenty-twenty-three Neolology Recommendations, Revisions. This is the fifth reading. Those are, no, they're not all on for.
No, they're not all on for action. So first, if the premieres would like to stay, you're more than welcome. Or we know that life is sometimes bigger for high school students than the Board of Education needs, so if you're gonna slip up, you can do that as well. But the, the spring, summer, Neolology Recommendations, Revisions, this is the fifth time we've gone through these. I don't wanna date myself, but back in the day, Bob Seger wrote a song called Against the Wind. Um, I, I don't wanna date myself, but back in the day, Bob Seeger wrote a song called Against the Wind. It starts out, it seems like yesterday, but it was long ago, now some would say that he was writing that song about a long lost love, but. I think maybe he was writing it about some Neola policy provisions that the Board of Education was considering, so. Um, the, the only change, uh, in this collection of artifacts, I did include, uh, additional information. Uh, uh, for policy sixty-three twenty, the purchasing of goods and services. Uh, what you'll find in that collection of artifacts is just a couple of other, um, district proposals to consider. Um, so, uh, you have, um, Marty had pulled together some different, um. So we've got Greenbill's purchasing protocol, Holt, Penn City, Rockford, and Sparta, and if you'll, if you notice and you compare side by side, they're all virtually. The same thing as what we've had. Um, and so that, what we're asking for is, i- is just a minor, a minor revision. Um, just to make the process a little more streamlined, we're not, we're not asking to, uh, override the process or to not have a process. Uh, we really just were, were looking to have it be a little bit more streamlined, and I don't know if you wanna share any more insight about the purchasing. Uh, the purchasing policy or not.
Uh, yeah, I, I would say currently, as written, ours is the most. Restrictive policy out of all those, and I, I would, I feel even with the proposed changes, they're still. Would be the most restrictive out of all those policies. Uh, but I think the changes brings it more alignment with, um, the state statute that. The state statute discusses construction projects and the purchase, purchase of inventory and goods. It's not, does not speak to, uh, contracted services. Um, so it kind of, our policy references the state statute, but then goes a little bit further to include services. Uh, so I added in here the services, contracted services can be negotiated either verbally. The, or via a request or proposal, or through the process, um, and then any. Any service that does exceed that state statute threshold that applies to construction and, uh, goods. Purchase of goods would require more approval. Uh, and then this kind of, there was a little bit of conflicting, um, information between the. Or policy and the administrative guidelines, so this kind of brings them all, uh, in line, one of both different, uh, documents.
Thank you for that.
So that, is it, is that the verbiage that's new, is the negotiated verbally, is that part of the new language system in green?
Correct, that would be new, if, um, moving for services from B. And, and then also, uh, making it, uh, formal quotes versus the competitive bid process. If you're asking a contractor to bid on a ten thousand dollar project, you're going to either lose out on potential contractors or vendors. Because ten thousand dollars isn't worth their, and go through the whole bid process and then wait. Or they're going to build in additional profit to make where there's none. Um, so the formal quotes is, we can solicit a quote from them, but we don't have to do a sealed bid process. Competitive bid is really a, we publish it, uh, in the newspaper, or we post it to the state website Sigma. We say, um, September thirtieth at one P M. at the boardroom, we're opening sealed bids. Welcome to show up and view it, and then we would open the bids with at least one witness. The, uh, at least two, uh, Cedar Springs employees, so you have one witness. At, at ten thousand dollar level, we might be, uh, pushing away some potential, uh, vendors or contractors.
So just another quick question, when would we do the, uh, the verbal versus the quotes, just, just so for clarity, so we can answer that question, is it really? For an ongoing construction project, if there's a minor thing not in scope, or when would we use that verbal quote?
If we are calling, uh, a software provider, so that's a service, we can get the verbal quote, comment, if you need a hundred seats. Uh, for this software, what is the, uh, what's the per unit cost? And obviously they would then send us a written quote after that follow up. But, but a construction project, if it's over that twenty-eight, well, for now, twenty-eight thousand, forty-eight dollars. Any construction project, we need to go to competitive bid. But you wouldn't get the verbal for a construction project, right, so you have to advertise that bid to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, the only other change, uh, in language from, uh, when we met on the twenty-first of August is. Um, I tried to provide a little additional clarity on, um, the service animal piece, uh, the eighty-three ninety. And there was some question about, um, how I had worried the, the leash, uh, the leash length, uh, component. So down at the bottom of that, um, proposal, under use of district sidewalks, roads. And lawns for purposes of walking or exercising with non-service animals. Item C, or item three, excuse me, I just read animals must be on a leash and within six feet of their owner at all times. So. It can be less than six feet, but it can be less than six feet, so hopefully that is a little clearer than the last.
There is a typo in number five.
Oh, okay.
On non-services.
Oh, got it, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Shannon always finds one. So for my clarity for action, if I call the, when we get to it, if I call it as presented, um, the only thing that. It's all there except for the purchasing of goods, correct, that's the whole over.
Correct. And if you call it, it would be with the typo fixed, right?
Yes, I'll be sure to, yes. Anything else? Can we move on? Okay, we can move on to the bond construction update.
That's right, so, uh, in your packet, there were several artifacts that we included. Uh, they were included regarding various, uh, elements of the bond, uh, that we're working with. Um, so really focusing, the, the majority of our energy right now is. Uh, the extent of buttoning things up over at Red Hawk, and then launching things over at Beach, Beach is all new for the most part, and so that's. Uh, probably a little bit more exciting, uh, they're hanging drywall at Red Hawk, uh, but they're designing a building over at the beach, so. Uh, what I wanted to include is, uh, we've received some additional renderings, uh, from the team at GMB last week, and so I included those. Uh, in your packet, just so, just so you can see, uh, what the building looks like, uh, from the exterior. So that would be the view if you're down, um, kind of at the park, the intersection, uh, between beach and trails. And you're looking to the northeast, uh, that would be the exposure, uh, that you would see. Um, and then the next, so that's kind of the back of the building, this would be the view if you were looking. Uh, if we were standing, uh, really down at the, the base, down on the parking lot of the Hilltop Building, we were looking to the southeast. That would be the, uh, view that you would see, uh, in that academic wing, the two-story academic wing. This would be, uh, the view if you were looking, uh, due south. Uh, so you're just starting to see the front of the building, but you're seeing that, uh, prominent academic wing, uh, coming out for you. Uh, to, and that, and that's projecting kind of to the, the due north out of the core of the building. Um, and then the next, uh, picture is just another view of the drop-off area and the front of the building. You'll see on the left side of the image, the taller structure, that's the existing gymnasium. Uh, so that's how they're incorporating the elements of the current building that we're maintaining over into the new building. And then the last one is just, again, the view of the academic wing, uh, now we're looking west. Uh, so we're standing kind of out in front of where the gym is right now, uh, and we're looking to the west, northwest. Uh, just to get that view again, just seeing the openness, the drive, uh, in front of the building. Just an interesting, uh, just an interesting images. So, um, the next artifact that's included is the architectural overlay, so I thought this was an interesting, uh, drawing, because. You know, in order to build the new building, we have to, we're building it out of a portion of the old building. Uh, and so what you'll see is the new building with the structure in red, the existing structure is the structure in blue. Um, so you'll see that there are several classrooms impacted on the west side of the current structure. Um, and then there are also a couple of, uh, classrooms impacted on the east side of the current structure. So the demolition that's occurred so far, uh, is really focused in on the, uh, east side of the, the building, so that they get started. We're still running into some complications, uh, with approvals and, uh, and some of our permits. Uh, that are coming out of Lansing, but what Triangle did, similar to what they did at the high school, you can get permitted with foundations. That, uh, that core work pretty easily, and so rather than wait, uh, on the whole project to be permitted. Triangle went ahead and got the permits, uh, on the foundational work, so they can get started on that work, just to keep their teams busy. Um, and then the, the other permits are just in the line, they're in the queue, so they'll be approved as, as, uh, as time permits. So the, the next artifact is, uh, actually the, um, the demolition plan, so if you look. Uh, on that one, you can see the building as it's laid out, so the first area of demolition. Is the phase one, is the area in green, again, that's the east side of, uh, of the current building. And that is scheduled or slated for the summer of twenty twenty-three. Phase two of the demolition then, uh, shifts over to the west end of the building. Uh, and that's when they remove those classrooms so that they can build that full wing, uh, that, that extended academic wing, and so. But that second phase of demolition will not occur until next summer. Uh, so we'll continue to occupy that end of the building, um, throughout the, throughout this school year. Um, and then obviously the phase three of the demolition will come after the building is complete. That will take place during the summer of twenty-five. Um, but by that time, the new building is complete, uh, we'll demo the old building, or the old structures. Uh, at, at the very last, uh, and then that will be, uh, pred- predominantly the work in the summer of twenty twenty-five. So it's gonna be to get the entrances, uh, prepared, get those drives finished, so that we can welcome students in. Uh, in, in August of twenty twenty-five, so, um, you'll see it's three phases of demolition. Uh, it's all very structured, all very clean, but it helps us keep moving forward. Uh, which you have to do when you're building, basically you're building on top of another building. So any questions on that, or any of the phasing? Okay, uh, the other artifacts that I included, um, I just included, that it might be kind of fun, uh, for you to be able to. Be reminded of the first floor architectural plan, so again, the, um, the, the, the existing building, we're maintaining the gymnasium. Uh, those art rooms, the cafeteria space, those four new classrooms to the right. Of the gymnasium cafeteria, those are four new classrooms, uh, they're being built as kindergarten rooms. Because eventually this building, uh, would likely become a K-five building if we, uh, grow, or when we grow to a point of needing. Uh, additional elementary classrooms, uh, but a- again, they'll be fully occupiable by second and third graders. No one will know the difference, uh, other than those spaces will have a, a bathroom in them. Um, but then the academic wing, uh, is the, the wing that kind of is, uh, going off on an angle. Um, and so you'll see, uh, classrooms on both sides of the, of the, of the hallway. That, uh, uh, structure that kind of juts out a little bit on an angle, creates a triangle space. Uh, if you recall back to one of the early, uh, renderings, I think the first rendering we showed, um, that was that little bump out. And that's a, a large group area, it can be used for a library or a reading book. Uh, it'll be a multi-purpose space, uh, in the building. Uh, it's just kind of a new space for students, it's gonna be a two-story space, a taller CMZ, it'll have a, a real neat, uh, feel to it. So that's the first floor, and then, uh, if you take a look at the second floor, which is the next. Uh, the next artifact, artifact included, you'll note that the second floor, uh. Uh, floor plan is only a small portion of the, of what we saw on the first floor, because. The building's only gonna be two stories, uh, for the academic. So that, uh, again, just wanted to keep that vision in your, in your thinking, the next artifact. Uh, is the overall site plan, so it kind of gives you a sense of how parking will flow, where the building will sit. Uh, you'll see that there will be, uh, a nice loop, um, you know, one of the things that is, uh, important to. Consider when you're building new, uh, schools is what they call a queuing line, and so it's that line of. Space that, you know, for, for parents who drop off and pick up their kids, um. You know, that, that queuing line has to be adequate, otherwise you get back and, uh, transportation backing, or vehicles backing up on. Roads in another parts of the, of the site, so that's one of the things, if you recall, of the work that we did for middle school. You know, we added some driveway, uh, but really what we did was we added queue, and we added lines for people waiting to pick up their kids. But it worked because it got the, you know, there are no vehicles sitting on fifteen mile or sixteen mile. Um, so you gotta, you gotta be thoughtful in terms of where people are gonna wait, uh, while they're waiting for their kids to pick up. Uh, there's also a nice, uh, parking area, um, between Red Hawk and Beach, that will be able to be shared between the two buildings. Um, and then you'll see that the majority of the, the playground structure really wraps around, it's the entire south. Uh, south end of the building, and then it also wraps around to the east, uh, inside of the new space for kids, uh, to play as well. This was a really complex site, uh, for several reasons, um, one, we have buildings sitting up. Uh, two, um, the drainage, you know, there's some wetlands in there and some drainage features. That they have to be, uh, mindful of, and then the, the, uh, the, the flow of the land, uh, elevations of the actual site. Uh, we have to take into multiple things in consideration, uh, when doing the design with there as well. Uh, and so it, that ordinarily, I don't know that you build a building with, uh, that kind of an angled feature, uh, coming off or branching off. Uh, but in this case, we needed to do that, uh, in order to fit the building, uh, appropriately onto the site that we live in. There was one meeting when we were, uh, when we were, uh, talking with the team from GMB, and we actually adjusted the angle. Of that, uh, branching arm of the building by, uh, four or five degrees, I don't remember which one it was, but. That enabled us to not have to take off as many classrooms during the demolition phase of the work, but it would also, it would, it would also enable that. Uh, structure to still fit into the, so it's little details like that, that are really, uh, it, it's interesting what comes out of those. Those meetings and those conversations. So any questions on the site? Okay, um, and then the last artifact, um, we included just a picture of the, uh, coal storage building that we're putting up between, um. This will go up on the hill, uh, between Cedar View and the high school, um, so in that space, there was a. Soccer field up there, um, that was really not used, uh, on a regular basis of the, um, surface, it wasn't irrigated. Um, and we just had better places for, uh, individuals to play, so we're gonna. Put a cold storage building up there, uh, and find some future use for it, that will be positive, which, at least we wanted to give you an idea of what it was gonna look like.
Nice spirit.
Yeah, looks great.
Um, and then the last artifact that I included, um, Marty and I sat in on, uh, a conversation with. Um, Steve Dateman and Scott Gerbert from Triangle Construction, and the, the purpose of the meeting was just to go through the big picture of the, of the. And the, the purpose of the meeting was just to go through the big picture of the, of the bond budget. So series one and series two and looking at the full scope of our expenditures so far. So if you recall, the original bond was for sixty-eight million dollars. And so we have completed series one. So basically, well, we're in the process of completing series one. When we finish up the work at Red Hawk, series one will be off the table for the most part. We will really be focused on that second package, the second series of projects. So we're really deep into series two, but we got bids in on Red Hawk, or excuse me, bids are in on Beach. And the bids were very favorable. I think the thing that I really wanted to bring to your attention was if you go down to page three at the bottom, you'll see that, you know, the, the, if you look to the, the left hand or the far right hand, the two far columns on the right-hand side of the page. So the original budgeted figure for all of our projects was sixty-eight million in one number. So far, our budgeted number is coming in at sixty-eight, sixty-eight million, seven hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars. So what that's, what that's really meaning is that of, of all the work that we've done so far, we're only, we're over budget by seven hundred fifty, or seven hundred, seven hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars. So just over one percent of our total expenditure, we're over on our budget. And, and that really is, is remarkable. When you think about the, just the complex times that we have gone through when these projects were bid and budgeted in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. I mean, remember this, this proposal was initially going to go to the vote in May of twenty twenty. So we did all the, all the spec work, all the bidding, all of that work was done pre-COVID. So before the, the realities of the material flow being impacting, having an impact on projects, labor costs impacting projects. And so when you think about the complex nature of the construction trades over the last three years, to have a one percent positive variance is, is a pretty substantial accomplishment. It, it's, it's really a testimony to the contractors and vendors in Cedar Springs and in this area. That's, that's reality. They're coming in and they're being incredibly generous with their bids. You know, they're doing projects for us that, at numbers that are really benefiting the district. And the thing is, it's, it's, you know, when you talk to Scott and, and Scott Gerber and Steve Dateman from Triangle, you know, th- those contractors see the value in the work that's being done here and the jobs are easy for them to do. You know, they don't have to send their crews, you know, to another part of the state or, you know, it's, it's convenient for them to do this work. And the other neat thing that they pointed out is, you know, and I hadn't really considered it until we were, we were having this meeting, but you know, yes, we're investing money into the, the buildings on campus. But because so many of the contractors live and work in our community, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars are going right back into their pockets in their weekly paychecks. And I thought that was just a neat, like that was a really refreshing way to look at, at a project like this where, you know, they always say that strong communities build strong school districts and strong school districts build stronger communities. And this is just a neat reflection of that. And so, you know, we're, 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 we're tracking in the right direction as far as our budget goes. And so I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. But also acknowledge the, I just think the, the positive relationships that are in existence between the construction trades in this community and, and district. So any questions on the bond so far or?
Not questions, but no, I just, I think some of what you've shared, I think has even been reflected in some of our other meetings or when they were here that when we did the tour and, you know, you could see, you could see some of that and they really did care, you know, about the work that's going on here and yeah, in a part of the community. And I think it does make a big difference.
Not every project is like this.
And there are other districts that have experienced significant overages. So thank you to Scott and I for keeping an eye on it and keeping us within one percent.
There's a thing that's called scope creep. And it's like, well, we can just do one, this little thing, it won't be a big deal. But then, and then we could just do this one little thing. And then all of a sudden, wow, you're, you've gone over on that particular aspect of the project by five or six hundred thousand dollars. Well, that adds up, you know, if you let scope creep enter into the conversation, all of a sudden, you're, you're way over budget and now you've got to start doing some significant reductions. But, you know, we're going to be able to come, we're going to be able to deliver on what we've promised. And that's, that's really.
No, go ahead. Moving on to operating village?
Yeah, so the next item is the operating village, information campaign plan. I just wanted to give you some insight. Our ballots, the language on the ballot, who from Pet County and in from Noguaygo County. So we're all set there as far as the war of elections go in each of those counties. I just included an artifact, it was final proof today. This is an art, this is going to be a postcard that's going to be going out to all families. Is, is that the printer right now? We gave it final proof, it'll go into the mail next week. Because people are going to be able to start voting at the end of September. And so we wanted to get a preliminary artifact out there. So this is the postcard that's going out. Then we've got similar material, similar information in the monthly newsletter that's going out tomorrow morning. That just goes out to our parents. We'll also have a similar display of information that will be going out to our mailing, the full mailed newsletter that goes out to all of the, all the residents of the district. So that'll go out in October. And then we'll do, continue to do just building level campaigns. It's, you know, it's, it's interesting when you go for a bond, the, the informational campaign is really about what you're going to build. But in a, not homestead, operating village campaign like this, it's really about what you lose in the event that this doesn't pass. And so for us, you know, it's the, it's the third failure to renew. This non-homestead renewal, this non-homeside knowledge will result in an over three million dollar reduction in revenue to the district. And so that, you know, having forums, having, there's not, we've got a lot of questions. It's, it's a pretty simple, pretty straightforward protocol. We do have a website up and, and running. There's a QR code on the backside of the, the postcard. So we'll be providing opportunity to people to get a little bit more information about the non-homestead renewal of the website, but also just providing links to, or providing, you know, my information if you want questions there. I mean, really it's going to be just about getting them, about just making sure that our parents are, are out there.
Any questions? Shannon, you need any thoughts?
I know you jumped out at me. I do like the QR code though, that was, I used my phone to see if it worked and it works. So, oh, thanks. Yeah, it's just an interesting campaign. It's not flashy, it's.
It's nice that it doesn't touch the parents of the students' property tax.
Right.
I, I think that's, that's the plus side of it all.
Yeah.
So I, I can appreciate those.
Okay. Moving on to flight plan two point O. Scott, you're still up to bat.
All right. So just included in the workbook is a, a small artifact, really screened down from what we saw back in August. I'd shared with everyone all the survey documentation that we had. So you can dig in, you can bring to some of the numbers in terms of that drove our decision-making, why we maintain certain growth opportunities and, and why we let some go as far as, they're still important for us. We're still maintaining focus on those, but really the, the true areas of growth that we've got that we see over the next three years, we've really, we're really trying to streamline the downwind. And so in the collection of slides, one of the other things that we talked about is just simplifying our values, our mission and our vision statements to make them just easier to, to, to grab and to, to get a hold of. So in terms of values, what we believe in as a district, what we're proposing is that we believe in the unique promise of each individual, of each learner. Each person that comes to our schools every day, whether it's a staff member or a student, they've all got a unique promise. And as a district, we believe in that promise and we want to do everything we can to help those individuals really capitalize on that promise. And because when that happens, neat things happen for that person as, as a human. And then our vision, what we aspire to be. So we aspire to be, we aspire to prepare all of our learners to exceed our potential or exceed their potential in just really simple. If you think the bar is here, our hope is because as we're working together, wow, you realize that your bar really is, is much higher. And so we're trying to get people to think bigger than what they think they are. And then the last one, you know, why do we exist as an organization? And really we exist to equip every learner with the ability to thrive. And so that's again, just really trying to simplify things so that our mission, vision and values are, are not jumbled, they're just really straightforward. And then lastly, you know, again, looking at how we broke our growth areas down, student and academic, or academic and student services, engagement and operations are the three kind of pillars. And then at the center of that work is our students. And then what we're proposing as far as our growth opportunities go, three areas of focus in academic and student services, five areas of focus in engagement, four areas of focus in operations. The reason why we have a few more areas of focus in engagement is because we see engagement really impacting both academic and student achievement a little while. We also see when we're engaged as an organization, it's going to have a positive impact on the organization or on the operations side of my work as well. So thoughts, wonders?
Any questions? It is on for action tonight.
No questions. Appreciate all the work and also I really appreciate the streamlined mission rhythm and this.
I agree with that, Jan, I think that's really good for a little bit. You waited up before, yeah, that was really helpful.
Okay, moving on to our M A S B Delegate Assembly Representatives. It's on November ninth, seven o'clock in Lansing at the Lansing Center. If anybody is planning to attend that and would like to be the delegate.
So really just on the agenda for thought, for discussion, we'll need to make a recommendation in COVID, so it just gives us a chance to think a little bit. If you want to be the one.
I plan on attending, so.
Somebody not going to harm us waiting for it.
What was the date again?
Yeah.
It's the same weekend as the play.
Oh, well, she ends up. Okay, we'll see that again. All right, moving on to public comment. This is a time where we would hear from anyone that would like to address the board for three minutes about a concern, and we won't be responding with you, the superintendent will be following up. But this is the time that we would hear if anybody has any comments. I've, I've got my timer ready.
I'm going to stand here and handle it.
Well, and if anyone else who are.
I don't have any concerns, quite the opposite. I just want to say thank you to the board and to you too, it's amazing. My kid, my son's in fifth grade, my daughter's anniversary, we've had a tremendous experience. My son has some trouble in the beginning. Every school was amazing, working the limit of my power. Special things like a mentor will help students, you can go to a different, you didn't like, he was over longer going to their class in the morning, he'd go to a special room. So many things that were done, so I, I've been super proud of this school, I'm very thankful. I truly believe in the overall well-being of the child, not just academics. So I love the, the things that they do in elementary, that be kind, be respectful. So many things are important about just learning and just treating each other with respect. So I've been super happy about that. I'm not sure if it ever comes up in board meetings, this is my first time, so I apologize if I've never been. But a couple of things that I love, if they ever come up, I love the outside pre-K. Talk to other parents who either children have children who have really, one of my friends, their, their kid was taking from kindergarten, pre-K was in trouble. Really excel because of the outside environment and some of the things they do. So keep that, keep the outside up, I love that. And then all those other programs are great. The only other thing I thought of while we were talking transportation shortage. I think busing is super important as part of school. I think it's, kids can not want to go to school because they don't want to get on the bus. Some of the stuff that happens on the bus, so I don't know if there's any resources that the school can provide to help transportation, how old that is, if that's all the transportation. But I would be totally for, please support me out to the bus system to get good quality bus drivers and enough bus drivers. We have an amazing one again, I'm so thankful. I think about all the days that they were amazing, getting the kids on the bus prime and hugs and everything. So anything we can do to help provide support for that would be all for. But overall, no, no concerns, I'm very happy, just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else going once, going twice? Okay, we'll consider public comment closed, thank you. Moving on to the action portion of the meeting. First action item is the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Parent Advisors for Special Education, known as PACE, representative recommendations, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Just appreciate the followers.
Yes. All right, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. The next action item is the A V M R and EBLI Professional Development expenditures. And I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion?
I'm just thankful for the hard work that goes into the plans to close the gap around math and literacy that we saw nationwide. I feel like we're ahead of the curve with that and I know there's a lot of work from Stacy and Jen that kind of went into that, thinking about how do we, how do we help these kiddos close those gaps that were really created by COVID. And so I'm just appreciative to the effort that went in upfront and then also to the teachers that are, are given their time, you know, after school and at these seminars in order to bring that, that new curriculum to light. So thank you for them.
I'm excited to see the results.
Yep.
Okay. All right, here we go. Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Third action item is the Spring and Summer twenty twenty-three Neol Policy Recommendations and Revisions as presented with correction of the title that's previously noted. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Are we talking about all of them from?
We are going items one through eight and there are different numbers on different. But I am going cumulative of one through eight.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Having know the discussion, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. President Reed, yes, motion carries. Final action item for tonight is the Flight Plan Two Point O, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Thank you again for the great clarity, detail. Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Communication from Board of Education, you have been apprised of any communication that I have received. So you are all up to date. And we have then to the superintendent, we have some additions in the board book.
So I have five artifacts that I included. So first, Trent had to ask for the background information on our new emergency response safety coordinator. So their regional position, so I included John's resume. I didn't block out his cell phone number and personal, personal information, but you can really see he's got an amazing, amazing collection of experiences that we're really excited about. I also included a copy of the job description, so you could, again, just be refreshed about what this position entails. John actually started last Tuesday, was his first day. He had a meeting, or we had a meeting with him up in Sparta, the Region One Superintendent's got together. And we spent about an hour with John and Sean Burns. Sean is the Director for Safety and Security at the Kent ISD, so John will be a part of that team. But it was really just a great vibe in the room, a lot of excitement. You know, it's just interesting, no one else is doing this. You know, no other collection of districts have come together to bring this type of quality resource to this important work of emergency response and insecurity. You know, one of the things that we just kept talking about was how, you know, it's not just about what we do in Cedar Springs, you know, what they do in Sparta, what they do in Kent City, what they do in Northview, what they do at Kenla, in Times Square Parks. If there is an emergency, how we can, as a region, support each other. And, you know, I, I would be able to go in and support the, the, the system, emergency response system. There was a crisis at Tana Hills, so that Jerry Hopkins could support these people. And that's, you know, it's not just when you, when you're faced with an emergency, it's not just about your emergency response plan. That's, that's one piece, it's very important, but there's human beings that are being impacted by that emergency. And that's what we're really excited to, to be able to capitalize on. So the other two pieces, the other two collection, there are other two artifacts. One was the M A S B Back to School Workshop notes that Tracy and I attended. And then there was also parental rights case notes that, that they talked about, part of that, part of that workshop. And then we also received an invitation from the High School Student Council about homecoming hallway information, and they've asked for judges who might be available on that Friday morning. The email that we sent out was listed the twenty-eighth as the day, but it's actually the twenty-ninth. So if you're available on the twenty-ninth and you wanna be a part of that, please, please head over to the high school and be a part of this, it's a, it's a cool vibe. It says before school, is there a more specific time that we can? Settle.
Five thirty A M.
Be there. I'll show up at your house.
You got sent out a mail, a mail about something at the high school as far as, but anything you wanna share?
Yeah, there was, I mean, it's, it, it's, I didn't, I didn't highlight it.
You don't have to.
Yeah, and I don't really don't, it's, so sometimes business is profit by providing a top ten list. And then you're on the top ten list, and then you can use their logo and use their affiliation to get a top ten list if you pay five hundred seventy-five dollars. Or, and so, you know, we were acknowledged by U S News and the World Report as the, I think we were seventh and fourth in the state. We were seventeen, seventeenth in the county. But they, they list pretty much everyone. And so everyone could get, everyone could be included on their top. I know, it's cool, don't get me wrong, it's better to be seventeen than to be eighteen. It is a great testimony to the work that our staff and our students are doing at the high school. But it, it's a little bit like, you know, in middle school when everyone gets a ribbon. Or you can pay for a ribbon with glitter on it. It's a cool statement, it's, it's neat. But there are other measures that we, we need to really lean into to determine how, to, to really measure and monitor that. So, yeah, yeah, I'm not.
Wow, look at us go.
I know, it's cool, I mean, don't get me wrong, it's, it's neat. Yeah. You have to wonder, like, is it, is it an opportunity to celebrate, or is it, is there a profit maybe? But it is cool to see where you are. According to whatever their standards are.
Yeah.
Yes. So that's all I have for communication.
Okay, so that brings us to plenty in future events in our next meeting. We don't have a second one this month, we go right to October?
October night.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the other artifact that's included in there, it, it was asked from the board table just to be able to get a list of all of the things that are happening throughout the district. And so Amy McCarthy, our communications specialist, keeps kind of a running log of what's happening. So I thought it'd be a neat thing to just be able to drop that into the agenda every month. And it'll be updated, you know, so as new things are added to the calendar, you'll be able to see it in, in relative real time. But that way it just keeps you on top of the theme, it's not, we don't have, obviously, all the athletic events and things listed. But, yeah, at least it gives you some insight as to some of the activities and things that are happening. So if this is a benefit, we'll keep doing it. And if there are other ways that we can help keep you informed, I mean, that's really what this is all about, so.
Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it, because that's what I would see sometimes after the fact. And I just think that we should be present at some things being on the board, just showing, I mean, not just at the meetings, just support and being at events, and so, thank you, I appreciate that a lot.
She had the list, it's just sharing. So thank you for the question and the suggestion. Those little things that make us better, one percent, right, every day, you just get one percent better.
And it's cool to go see, to go see the time, effort, and energy, right? That was a quote from last meeting, time, effort, energy. But to be able to go firsthand and see it's pretty cool, so thank you for sharing that.
I think it bumped us up to sixteen.
There you go.
There you go.
All right, having no more business before the board this evening, we can stand adjourned at eight oh three. Thank you, thank you everybody for joining us.